I'm calling this meeting of the Cleveland Heights City Council.
Yeah, there. To start this evening at 7:32. I appreciate everybody that's here and bear with us, we do have a lot of business. So I'd like Addie to call off the roll, please.
Tom.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Posh.
We have no absent members, so, and we have no amendments to the agenda. Approval of minutes from previous meetings, there were none.
It's time, sorry guys.
It's okay. I do have a very special moment that I'd like to have Pat Hanovin and her family come forward, please. I'm gonna read a resolution that's in memoriam for our recently passed Bill Hanovin. I'm gonna sit here and read the resolution and I'll be right out there to join you, alright? Who do we have with you tonight?
Our daughter Emily, our younger daughter Emily.
Nice to meet you.
And son Theo, our granddaughter Bee, our son-in-law Alex Leslie.
Nice to meet all of you. Yes, and there's crossover too, they do other things besides trees, but yes. This is the resolution that was put together, Addie helped me do it. Just a second. It's Resolution Number 203-2025. A resolution recognizing the life and contributions of William "Bill" Hanovin, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Whereas Bill Hanovin passed away on September 4th, 2025, having, leaving behind a legacy of love, generosity, and deep-rooted commitment to family, friends, and community. And whereas Bill's passion for trees began decades ago in Western Michigan, at his former home where two majestic oak trees inspired him with their strength and beauty. And whereas Bill cultivated this passion by studying native species, purchasing saplings and planting them not only on his own property, but anywhere neighbors and friends welcomed them, transforming unused spaces. Even a vacant horse pasture beside his home into thriving forests with the help of his country, his county's conservation district. And whereas Bill's efforts extended beyond his own land, as he helped friends reforest former farmland, kept potted trees on hand for whenever planting opportunities arose, and carried his love of trees with him into retirement here in Cleveland Heights, where he continued to plant trees around this neighborhood and for any resident who requested one. And whereas Bill's generosity was matched by his humility, as he often planted trees free of charge, offering not just the saplings, but the labor and care required to ensure their survival. And whereas in 2019, Bill's tree planting hobby grew into a larger movement when at a fundraiser for the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, he met the like-minded neighbors Margie Weinberg, Sue Walport, Paul Pert, and Laura Marks, with whom he co-founded Heights Tree People. And whereas through Heights Tree People, Bill and his fellow volunteers assessed neighborhoods with sparse canopy, knocked on doors, offered trees at no cost, planted them in schoolyards, and most recently partnered with the Heights Libraries and Cuyahoga County's Healthy Urban Tree Canopy Program to create an urban mini-forest, an effort that earned the group the University of Heights Good Neighbor Award in 2024. And whereas since the founding Heights Tree People has planted more than 1,000 trees. Do you know what the count is right now, by any chance, Pat?
Sure. Getting toward 2,000.
Alright, so well on the side of 1,000. And surrounding communities in Cleveland Heights, strengthening the environment, improving stormwater absorption, reducing their urban heat island effect, and bringing cleaner and greater beauty to our neighborhoods. And whereas Bill's presence at Arbor Day celebrations, neighborhood tree plantings, and community events will be deeply, deeply missed. But his legacy lives on in every canopy that shades a sidewalk. Every child who plays beneath a newly planted tree, and every volunteer who continues his mission. Therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Cleveland Heights that this council hereby honors and remembers Bill Hanovin for his extraordinary contribution to the city of Cleveland Heights, for his steadfast belief that planting trees is an act of love, and for inspiring others to follow his example of service and stewardship. Well, thank you very much.
So moved. It's been moved, looking for a second.
Second?
Second.
Alright, and I would like to take a, just ask everybody what they want to vote on this. Those who wish to pass this legislation, say aye.
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 Any noes?
Motion is passed.
Thank you all.
Motion is passed.
Thank you so much.
This is for you.
Oh.
The resolution is in.
Oh, thank you.
How wonderful.
Yeah, let's see.
Thank you for coming, I'm sorry for the interruption.
Your group did a great job, didn't it?
Thank you.
I'm sure you're gonna be Heights Tree People.
Oh yeah.
Thank you all for all your support.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was a bit out of sequence, so my brain didn't react fast enough. But that was really important, that was extremely important to be done this evening. Let's see where we at on the agenda. Communication from the mayor, thank you very much, Councilor Maddox.
Madam President.
Yo.
How do you like that? Is that alright?
I'm not used to it yet, Tony, sitting in this chair feels really strange.
I think it's been a really good week for Cleveland Heights. You know, it started on Wednesday when we hired Sharon Dumas to be the city administrator. Sharon's gonna be running day-to-day operations for the rest of this year. All the directors report to Ms. Dumas, except for the chief and the law director for the charter. And we're very excited to have you here, and you're gonna hear from Ms. Dumas in a moment. The rehiring of Jessica Shantz as communications director, couldn't be happier about that. And I wanna talk about Bill Han a little bit, he was only gone for one day. But I wanna thank the council because that decisive action that you took on Wednesday helped a major project move forward. We're, on the, on the agenda tonight is the Park Synagogue legislation. It's been, you know, out there for a little while. Bill Hannah, Jason Dodson, Alan Richter, and Josh Rosen. We all met on Thursday, the day after, the day after Bill came back. And, you know, we got, we got a, we got a deal done, and certainly it's up to council as to whether or not it goes forward, but that's teamwork. You know, working together, and we had a lot of things done this week, simply because we work together as a team. I wanna thank you for that. And I'll have more to say about the project when we, when you guys vote on it. And I'm just gonna conclude this, my remarks, with some great news, some more great news. You guys remember Todd? Todd is coming back tomorrow. And we're really excited. If you don't know, Todd is the person, the mayor's Action Center coordinator. He's the person that everybody loves and counts on to make sure, you know, when there's complaints and so forth. I called him up Friday, I said, "How you doing?" He said, "Alright, you know, new jobs, mm, kinda so-so." And maybe five minutes later, you know, I mean, I talked him into it. So we're just, we're just really glad he's back. He's gonna be working out of the communications department. We got his desk all set up and phone installed and everything, so he'll be here tomorrow. So hopefully more good news next week, but thank you, Madam President, that concludes my report.
That was a very thrilling report, thank you very much. Todd is and will be an asset for the city. Now we have city administrators' report.
Madam President, members of council, I am following my boss's instructions as to how I should prepare this very first city administrator report. He asked that I briefly review my own bio, so I'm gonna do that very briefly. I have been in public and private sector experience for over 40 years with fiscal and executive staff management. I started at the city of Cleveland in March of 1999, and I worked for Mayor White in the Department of Community Development, I worked for Jane Campbell as Director of the Empowerment Zone, which was a program for business development and job creation. And of course, then I worked under Mayor Frank Jackson for a 16-year period as Director of Finance and Chief of Staff. So I've been doing that for all my time. My private sector experience was right out of college for, I worked for Republic Steel before it became LTV Steel, and I did that for a period of time. So that's a brief synopsis of my life. I am excited about this 90-day engagement with Mayor Kuta and the city of Cleveland Heights. In summary, for this period, we will provide temporary governance, which is exclusively Mayor Kuta. He sets the agenda, and I follow his lead. We also are going to try to do, and successfully do, maintenance and efficiency in the delivery of city services, that's me and the executive staff. And finally, a transition, in order that we can give some learned and accomplished items to whomever may be coming in behind us at the end of that quarter. That will include what we've done in the last quarter, and then some synopsis of what needs to happen in the first quarter. Contracts, or improvements, or whatever, so they don't, not walking in kind of blind. The other part of my report, the mayor and I held our first executive staff meeting, directors and chiefs, on October 2nd, my second day, first day of working. And we're gonna be holding those weekly in the month of October, and then bi-weekly through November and December, pending any unforeseen challenges. And so we kind of know what happens in the last quarter of a year as it relates to leaf pickup, snow removal, okay? So we'll be monitoring the performance of those various departments. Very professional, very mature, very seasoned, informed executive staff. So I had no inhibitions, or complaints, or concerns about having met those individuals. My noteworthy immediate initiative, of course, is the mayor's estimate, which is the budget book. And to prepare for budget hearings, we are behind schedule simply because of some things that weren't done on a timely basis, I'm gonna say that. And then, but we are moving ahead, and we will be fine. As we shared with council in executive session, we have posted the end-of-the-year budget-to-actual reports, all the performance measures that you generally get, unencumbered fund balances, ARPA projects, budget actual reports. We're doing those for fiscal 2025, and we've posted March and June. And so we'll be closing September, third quarter, along with doing our estimates for year-end before you begin your budget session. And that will include vacancy reports and everything that impacts the finances of the city. We may have to come back to council for some additional authority on capital projects in both police and fire that are in process, and may need some additional funding or some additional authority to finish those projects. And Director Klink Scale's schedule for leaf collection is going, is going to begin October 20th, two weeks early, and it will be posted next week. Anything additional?
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, and we're so happy you're here, and I know that Mayor Kuta is happy you're here. As the charter requires, for a mayor to have a city administrator, that is a team that I'm looking forward to working with immensely. Any departmental reports, Mayor Kuta? Any depart, okay.
None at this time, thank you.
Forward to the clerk of council?
None at this time.
So this is public comment, I'd like to know, first of all, how many people that we have for legislative agenda items?
I believe just one.
Alright, so that person will, we're asking that you keep it to a three-minute limit. You'll have three beeps that will tell you that you, your time is up, and we want you to come to the podium right now and state your name and the street you live on. Of course, Addie will call your name first.
Jennifer Winter.
Good evening, Jennifer Wintner, Scarborough Road. The two resolutions regarding the sale of city lots raise serious concerns, particularly given the issues the city has faced with attempting to convey public parcels over the last couple of years. The city has no policy in place for selling its vacant lots. Yet it proposes to sell 64 lots to two developers, one of whom is only a pass-through, who have presented no plans to the community, and without the city's issuing an RFP. Although the city did issue a request for expression of interest of developers, which is not the same as an RFP, and the two have been conflated. How are these sales agreements fair? How do they make sense? They aren't, and they don't. The city dragged out the process of selling one single parcel at Cedar Fairmont that only one developer wanted, and then the city killed the deal because it, the city, failed to have sufficient and timely community outreach. Before that debacle, the city had to put on hold its agreement to sell another developer property at Noble for a tax credit project, until that developer conducted adequate community outreach and redesigned its project to align with neighbors' desires. Now, the city proposes to sell 64 lots with no community outreach and no plans. The planning department issued an RFP in July for a housing needs assessment, apparently to avoid community protests such as we saw for the Cedar Fairmont and Noble Lytec projects. I contend the city has no need for another expensive study. Everyone in Cleveland Heights knows what our housing issues are. What we do need is a fair and well-thought-out process for disposition of city-owned property that will result in the attractive and high-quality rehab of existing houses and new construction on vacant lots that satisfy market demand. The two developers may very well be able to produce that, but we don't know, we've seen no plans. These resolutions are extremely premature and should be withdrawn. The city should establish a fair and open process for selling its property before even considering developers' proposals to acquire large numbers of parcels. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Addie, how many do we have for general? Alright. Again, I would ask that you come to the podium when your name is called, and at the end, and just tell us what's your name and your address, or your neighborhood if you prefer not to give your street. And at the end of that time, you'll have a beep, 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 please come now, as Addie calls your name.
Chris Kendall.
Christopher Kendall, East 190th Street, Euclid, Ohio. Madam President, Madam Vice President, Members of City Council, Mayor Kuta, colleagues, friends, and the citizens of Cleveland Heights, good evening. I stand before you as someone who has faithfully served the city for the past 24 years, and I can confidently say that it is a new day in Cleveland Heights. The charter works, and as Thomas Jefferson reminds us, it is the people who are the only sure reliance for the preservation of our liberty. By exercising their rights under the First Amendment and the city charter, the people of Cleveland Heights remind us that ours is a government of laws, and not of any individual. Mayor Kuta, I commend you on taking swift action in nominating Ms. Sharon Dumas to fill the vacancy of city administrator, and I commend the council on its unanimous approval of her nomination. Additionally, I want to thank you for reinstating both Director Hannah and Director Shantz to their rightful roles here at City Hall. These actions demonstrated commitment to the restoration of a functioning government. It is my hope that the wounds caused by the previous administration are acknowledged, and that the latest revelations to come to light will erase any doubt that the concerns about the inexcusable behavior and inappropriate presence of a non-employee as reported by former colleagues were legitimate, not knowingly false, as mischaracterized by someone who reveled in playing the victim to circumstances they created. In closing, I believe we are uniquely positioned to restore the public trust through accountability and transparency. Let us recommit ourselves to moving forward together in order to serve the urgent needs of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Karen Groshaw.
Good eve, good evening, everyone. I'm Karen Groshaw and live on Montavista. Many times when people come up to speak, it's about a concern or a problem they hope you will solve. This time, it's different. I'd like to thank each of you on council and our new mayor for the hard work you've done this year, the numerous meetings you've held, the willingness to listen and to engage, the respect and integrity that you've shown, and the courageous actions that you've taken. You have served the people of Cleveland Heights well. We are your friends, your neighbors, and the voting public that elects you. Well done, good and faithful servants. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, thank you so much.
Amy Eugene. Did she leave? Oh, there she is.
Hi, my name is Amy Eugene, I live on Scarborough Road, and I made a mistake. I thought I was involved in a grassroots movement to recall Khalil. But from what I can tell, there seems to have been not only a well-coordinated recall movement, but it also appears to be, it may be an install movement. Jim Petrus, you are a solid candidate, and you can stand on your own two feet. You don't need propped up by Tony, Greg, Craig, and Gail. When they tip the table in your favor through their endorsement, you could have said, "No, thanks." Jim, you could have also said, "No, thanks" to Heights Democrats Club, where you serve as secretary. Now you are an endorsed Democrat by the same group in which you hold a leadership position. And to think Davida has been given so much heck for saying she's an endorsed Democrat. So you didn't stand on your own two feet, you allowed yourself to be propped up, and are choosing to take part in this. Where two heavily influential bodies have come together, some members of council and Heights Democrats Club, to get residents to use this probably as their voting guide. But I caution our residents, thanks to what appears to be a well-coordinated shadow network, our mayorship and city council have become a gated community by invitation only. And based on this card, it also appears that it is being gentrified. We know who gated communities keep out and who gentrification hurts the most. Black and brown people and those of lower socioeconomic means. Cleveland Heights is 50% people of color and 50% white. I urge the black Democrats and progressives of Cleveland Heights to form your own club. And for anyone who says that the race card is being played, you are correct. This is the race card, and I am responding to it. I see Heights Libraries represented on this card. Did they endorse this, are they collaborating with you? Or is it that I see in very tiny font, Noble Branch? Is this just a little crumb that gets thrown to our noble neighbors? Joe DeWitt-Foy, I think you're new to this rodeo, so I'm gonna give you a little grace and just say, be careful whose wagon you are hitching your bicycle to. I wanna close by speaking to those who may be part of what could be a well-coordinated shadow network here in Cleveland Heights. You are usurping democracy here, step off. We, the people, decide who sit up there. And if we put someone up there that you don't like, be grown-ups and figure out how to work with them. That is leadership, not tipping the tables in favor of a very homogeneous group of individuals that all like each other. We are not that desperate in Cleveland Heights to walk away from our values, our principles, and our morals. Give Cleveland Heights residents our democracy back, a democracy that many of us don't even realize we lost. Step off, give us our democracy back, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. John Gaul.
Hi, excuse me, I'm John Gaul, I live at 3444 Fairmount Boulevard. Infamously, the house that has been hit multiple times by cars over the years. There's a lot about that situation that I could talk about tonight, and I would very much like to discuss that with our two mayoral candidates at sometime in the very near future. I've left you a couple of messages on your website, but no response yet. There's, I have a number of issues about what has happened and what is in the works about that. But I'm here for a different reason, kind of on the periphery, and it affects everyone here. I wanna talk about that stupid speed bump on Taylor Road. I assume that was put there in response to my house being hit, but I fail to see how that does anything to protect me. Number one, the three times I was hit were cars being chased by the police going at excessive speeds. So the one question I've had since the beginning is, what happens to a car going 85 miles an hour when it hits that speed bump? I don't think that has any... How do I phrase this? It doesn't help you control the car, or anything, you know? If someone going that fast hits a bump at 85, what happened? Did anyone look into that situation? Because those are the three times I've been hit, cars going at super excessive rates of speed, being chased by the police. That's what I need protection from, not speeders, or drunks, or anything like that, that happens. I've been told that you refer to the speed bump as a traffic calming something or other. I would characterize it more as a road rage trigger. If you sit in my, challenge, you come to my house, sit in my kitchen, sit at the table, look out my window that goes directly down Taylor Road, and look at the faces of the drivers that don't make the light because they had to slow down to go over that bump. They are anything but calm. And I'm content that they are angry, and they're gonna take it out somewhere else. So it's a trigger, in my opinion, I don't think it calms anything. Number two, how much did that thing cost? I know for a fact, because I've observed it, six road crews have been out there to repair it over the course of the, what, one year it's been in place? You've had to fix it six times, what does that cost? Number two, I know a car, after a snowplow hit it after the first snow of the season last year, tore that thing up, and a car had its bumper torn off, how do I know that? The bumper was sitting across the street from my house for a week before the service crew came and picked it up. So, in conclusion, why is it there? What purpose does it serve, and how does it protect me? Because I fail to see how that is. Please make it go away, thank you.
Thank you, John. Kathy Petrie. You're forgiven. Blanche Filanci.
I did intend to have some comments. Good evening, Mayor Kuta, city council, staff new and old, and people of Cleveland Heights. My name is Blanche Filanci, I have lived on Yorkshire Road since 1978. The League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland, Cleveland Heights University/Heights Chapter, wants to remind all voters that early voting for the November 4th elections begins tomorrow, by mail and in person at the Board of Elections. If you're going to vote in person, be sure you know where they've moved to. If you need help deciding how to vote in this most interesting year, we can help. The candidate and issue forums the League presented in September are available in their entirety on our website, lvwgreatercleveland.org. The voter guide is also available in the October Heights Observer, pick it up wherever it's offered for free. And the voter guide is on our League of Women Voters website. And the candidates' answers to our questions can be seen at vote411.org as well. See what the candidates had to say and make your decisions. Democracy is alive and well in Cleveland Heights. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Blanche. Erin Flanagan.
Good evening, council, mayor. Erin Flanagan, 3091 Essex Road. I'm a 17-year resident of Cleveland Heights. I'm a 17-year resident of Cleveland Heights, and today I had the opportunity to accept an invitation to a call with the United States Army Corps of Engineers on behalf of an interested party to the goings-on at Shaker Lakes, one-third of which, if people don't know this, is the responsibility of Cleveland Heights, which, to my knowledge, after looking for five years, does not appear anywhere on the city's financials, despite the fact that you have signed a legal lease with Cleveland. The lease of which requires that Cleveland Heights maintain the park in the state that it was intended. It's all spelled out in the lease. I'm not going to go through the legal lease, although I am a lawyer. But obviously, the maintenance hasn't been done. And we can see that in Lower Lake, and certainly, we can see that in Horseshoe Lake. Together, they are the Shaker Lakes. They are one ecological footprint, although they have two different names. They are one, the Shaker Lakes. The purpose of the call today, which I found out about last week, was to get community, public input on the sewer district's plan to drain, permanently drain, the Shaker Lakes. And in their stead, put sewerworks, including roads, raising 1,000 trees, paving over, I think it was 25 acres. It's all in the sewer district's plan. And on the call was a representative from the Cleveland Heights City Council and the U.S. Army Corps, among other people. She didn't announce her name, and I didn't, she's not here today, but she represented that she was representing the Cleveland Heights City Council. Shaker Heights City Council was on the call. I was on the call on behalf of Friends of Horseshoe Lake. Cleveland Heights Historical Society was on the call, Shaker was not. Some archaeological experts from the state were on the call. And everyone on the call objects to what the sewer district is trying to do, which is drain our resource, our public resource. That, by the way, was built 199 years ago by the Shaker Colony. It's 200 years old next year. And Shaker Heights Council and the Cleveland Heights Council today reiterated that they have no objection to the sewer company's plans, no objection whatsoever, nothing to add mitigation. The sewer company will put up some signs, once the lakes are drained, that there used to be lakes here, and they would be 200 years old, but they're gone now. And here's where you can Google, to learn more about the Shaker Colony that was here, informed this entire area, Cleveland Heights included.
Thank you, Aaron. I have to call you on time. I would like to, you know, I did not know, and I don't think anybody here knew that we were being represented today. So if there's some way to find for you to act, call the whoever.
Well, it's not my responsibility for the city council to do its responsibility to the residents.
Well, if you could please send me a contact for whoever organized the call, I'd really appreciate it.
It's the United States Army Corps of Engineers. Thank you, my time is up.
Hi, I'm Keith Elliott. I live on Delwood Road, and I wanted to say hello to the mayor and council, and I appreciate a few moments to talk. I'm here to talk about the amended charter and the voter adoption of the amended charter. I don't think that surprises anybody at all. But what I want to ask you to do today, mayor and council, is to be clear, strong, and public in your support of the adoption of the amended charter. I believe it is critical to the future of the city that we do this. Just in case somebody's listening or here that has not got a very tiny, just a very tiny review, our city charter is outdated. It was written for a city manager form of government, not the elected mayor form of government we have today. And this mismatch has led to confusion, ineffectiveness, and a lack of accountability, which we're all aware of. The amended charter on November's ballot, which is issue seven, addresses this problem. It reflects the work of two charter commissions, charter review commissions, as a total of 22 Cleveland Heights residents, as well as this city council. The result is a charter designed for the government the City of Cleveland Heights has today. I want to clarify just one point that I don't believe is well-understood. Charter amendments, as you know, can go to the voters either as a single issue or as multiple issues. So they, either one is common, or both of them is common, all right? Lakewood has recently passed amended charter using a single issue, and that is because the issues that they were dealing with were broad and had broad impact. University Heights recently had an amended charter, passed, go to the voters, and passed. And there were six distinct issues. They were separate, they were distinct, and the voters could vote on them. Our efforts, the charter review commission's efforts, your efforts on the council, okay, reflect much more Lakewood than University Heights. So it's not unusual to find that this charter, this amended charter is coming to the voters as a single issue. And I just hope I can get that across to people who may be concerned about this, because it's normal, okay? It's normal for this to occur. Finally, if anybody here, you all know us, us anyway, has any questions about the amended charter and wishes to talk to somebody about those questions, Linda Strieffsky, who is the chair of the Charter Review Commission, and I are both available whenever you would like, by phone or however, to review your questions. Linda's phone number is 216-533-6941, and my phone number is 216-551-7879. Thank you very much, all.
Thank you, Guy.
Good evening, council, Mayor Kuta, everybody watching at home, everybody here. I just want to take a moment first just to say to the leadership that's here, thank you. Thank you all for what you did last week. Thank you to Davida Russell specifically for showing a magnanimous gesture last week. Thank you, Gare Larson, for taking on the role of the presidency. Thank you to the rest of council for voting for that as well, too. And thank you, Mayor Kuta, for taking swift action to bring back those who were, quite honestly, done wrong by the last administration and kind of riding the ship. You know, I'm really excited about what the future really holds for our city. I think we have some great opportunities ahead. And I want to share with everybody here just a little something I wrote a few days ago, just some thoughts of mine, that I posted this on Facebook, but I thought it was worth coming out tonight and reading it to everybody. "I trust and hope that the three candidates who were not successful in their bids for mayor will still choose to stay engaged, lending their passion, ideas, and energy to the important work ahead." And that includes, I'm, you know, spitballing here, that includes all of us that were involved in the recall effort, as well as those who, you know, maybe weren't as active. This is a time of transition and rebuilding, and every voice matters. In about a little less than 30 days from now, we will go to polls to elect a new chief steward of our city. But I wanted to remind us all, we are all stewards of our city. As one prominent leader once reminded us, "It takes a village." Together, each and every one of us holds a piece of the vision for the Cleveland Heights we want to see. Let's step forward with unity, optimism, and determination. Let's honor our city's motto, "All are welcome," by building bridges, amplifying diverse voices, and creating a future that truly reflects the spirit of our community. This is our moment. Let's not squander it. We can create a shared vision. Let's rise together and make Cleveland Heights a city that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
That's all we have.
All right. That closes the public comment for this evening. So we will be going on to legislation. We're going to start with the first readings for consideration of adoption. And Eddie, if you'll start to read the legislation, please.
I have ordinance number 193-2025 on first reading, and ordinance to amend certain subparagraphe of ordinance number 011-2025 relating to appropriations and other expenditures of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Kuta.
So moved.
Second.
So you got the first and the second? Okay. I would like to know if there's any discussion on this particular item. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes.
I have resolution number 195-2025 on first reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Northeast Ohio Area-Wide Coordinating Agency for a grant under the Transportation for Livable Communities Initiative Implementation Grant Program to fund Phase III of the Taylor Road corridor road reconfiguration, and to accept and enter into any agreements related to the grant program, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Kuta.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. I would like to ask if there's any discussion on this item. All right? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I have resolution number 195-2025 on first reading, a resolution supporting and authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund for a grant under the program, and to accept funding if awarded for the Adalboro-Shelburne Trail for the Donbrook Restoration Park Improvements Trails Project, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Kuta.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I have ordinance number 196-2025 on first reading, and ordinance amending section 140.02, members of Chapter 140, Cleveland Heights Climate and Environmental Sustainability Committee of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Cleveland Heights, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Kuta.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, just briefly, this is not about this piece of legislation. I just want to let the public know, several people have asked, President Larson is not saying she's opposing these, she's stating, she's asking if anyone is. They're thinking that you're voting opposing after we're passing this, just the way it's being worded. So I'm just letting the public know, you're not voting against any of these.
No, I didn't say aye. I'm very, I apologize for that.
No problem.
I was looking at the next one. Thank you. I, okay, on this particular piece of legislation, which was just read, all in favor? Opposed? All in favor? You got me. Ready to vote? Yes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Did we miss one? The application for the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, 195?
We got that one.
Okay. All right. Sorry.
Now where am I? Okay. I have ordinance number 197-2025 on first reading, and ordinance amending section 150.02, members of Chapter 150, Transportation and Mobility Committee of the Codified Ordinances of Cleveland Heights, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Kuta.
So moved.
Get a second?
Second.
Discussion? I would like to say that I appreciate Mayor Kuta bringing this legislation amendment for those two very important committees, citizens committees, to us, and modifying the language so that should there be a need when the city administrator or the person selected, the sustainability coordinator cannot attend the meeting of the Transportation Mobility or Environmental Sustainability Committee, they're not available, or if the mayor believes that it's, the time is better spent, for instance, in the case of city administrator, by a designee, I appreciate you putting this, these two pieces, they're actually two pieces that are the same, but they involve two different committees. So thank you for doing that, and I'm in favor of these two pieces of legislation. So, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have resolution number 198-2025 on first reading, a resolution appointing Matt Alden as an alternate member of the Board of Zoning Appeals of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Councilmember Cobb.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes.
I have resolution number 199-2025 on first reading, a resolution appointing Adam May, Casey Friedland, Illy Massey, Lorna Rudolph, and Valerie Ross as members of the Citizens' Advisory Committee of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Councilmember Cobb.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Posh.
I just think it needs to be said, it seems like we're doing a lot of rubber stamping. But I mean, it just, for everybody knows, I mean, there's been a lot of work that has been done by the Administrative Services Committee run by Councilmember Cobb, its members, other guests, councilmembers that have shown up in those meetings, meetings like our council meeting as a whole today, where we've discussed a lot of these things in full. So yeah, I mean, I think it seems like it's rubber stamping, but it seems like this is like, rubber stamp, rubber stamp, rubber stamp, without us giving any thought about it. But I want to assure everybody that that is really not the case.
We have all done our homework and researched these and listened to that committee the whole day. So I appreciate you making that comment, Counselor Posh. Thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes, next.
I have resolution number 200-2025 on first reading, a resolution appointing Anne Salesich as a member of the Landmark Commission of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Councilmember Cobb.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes.
I have resolution number 201-2025 on first reading, a resolution appointing Patricia Smith, Wanda Owens, and Colleen McGowan as members of the Commission on Aging of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Councilmember Cobb.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have resolution number 202-2025 on first reading, a resolution appointing Peter Whiting to fill an unexpired term as a member of the Climate and Environmental Sustainability Committee of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Councilmember Cobb.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have resolution number 204-2025 on first reading, a resolution recognizing October 2025, a sudden unexpected death in epilepsy, SUDAP Awareness Month, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Kuta.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye? Okay, motion passes. Sorry.
Next, I have resolution number 205-2025 on first reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Coventry Village Special Improvement District, Inc., for advancement of funds to cover a 3% increase that was not added to the assessment, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by, who do we have here? President Larson, Vice President Russell, councilmembers Posh, Maddox, and Petrus.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No. Excuse me. The motion passes.
I have ordinance number 206-2025 on first reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement with Friends of Mendelson in the sum of $750,000 and a waiver of city permitting fees up to $250,000 in order to fund trails, walkways, sidewalks, sightlighting, and landscaping improvements to the real property located at 3300 Mayfield Road, permanent parcel numbers 684-34015, 684-34014, and 684-35025, and more commonly known as the Park Synagogue Campus, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Kuta.
So moved.
Let me hear a second. I'm going to open this for discussion. I do believe that my colleagues will want to say anything, and I'll make a statement after they're done. So who wants to go first?
Do we want to do the second piece first? I didn't know. It's up to you guys.
I would like to treat them as separate pieces of legislation, but, understanding to the public that the second piece of legislation is 205, excuse me, 207, 2024. 207, 2025, and that is in regards to a loan. I'd just like to get our statements out there first on each piece of legislation. So anybody wish to speak? Go ahead, Counselor Maddox.
I'll keep mine brief. I'm looking forward to this project. Thank, I want to thank the city staff for working with the developers to put together a deal that works. This is going to catapult this property into the future. It opens it up for the public, and I'm excited about the impact this will have as well as the example that this sets for future developers in terms of some of the creative things that we can do to make projects work. But again, I want the public to know that I'm in full support of this project, excited about the future of it, both phases. But anything that we can do to continue to support this and projects like this in the city, I think we're better for it. So I want to thank everyone for their patience for this, both the public and the city staff working through so much to make this happen. But I think as a council, we're really, really excited to see this project finally happen. And so I'm looking forward to voting yes on this.
Anyone else? Counselor Cobb?
This deal took a long time because we had to do some negotiating. The deal that was originally presented to city council was one that I simply could not in good conscience live with or vote for. The original deal, which we were asked to pass, called for $2 million from the City of Cleveland Heights. $750,000 of that was for the trails, walkways, and sidewalks. And then there was a $1.25 million loan at 2% interest that had a balloon payment after 30 years for a little over a half a million dollars. It was not a good deal for this city. When we negotiate with a developer, it should never be something that's done in public, and a developer should never be engaging in a social media campaign, which is what this developer in this case did. I'm glad that it appears that we were finally able to reach an agreement with this developer, but their social media campaign has left a bad taste in my mouth. And it's just not the way that any developer that wants to do business with the city should conduct themselves. Both sides have lawyers. The lawyers are engaged to do the negotiation, and that is what should happen. It shouldn't be done on social media in an effort to try and persuade the city council to agree to something that I believed was on unfavorable terms to the city.
Thank you. It's been a long time coming. I'm happy to finally see this up for a vote. It will both provide the capital that's necessary for this project to move forward, and it's a much better deal for the city. So I look forward to supporting it. I look forward to people being able to enjoy that property.
I'd like to thank the new administration, the law department, President Kuta. I'm not sure we would have had a deal if it wasn't for you guys and your team and our lawyers. And I think we all wanted to have this deal to come through. There was a lot of misinformation out there about it, and I'm just going to leave it at that, but we need a new way that we do business with council and the administration working better together so we can alleviate these kind of problems in the future. But I'm really thankful how quickly we were able to resolve this and how quickly this developer and our community is going to be able to enjoy our vote, our positive vote, assuming that we're all going to vote for this tonight.
I am so excited this is over. This has been a long time coming, and I want to thank Mayor Kuta for actually acknowledging Director Hanna in his role in getting this deal done and bringing him back swiftly to make sure he was at the table, at the negotiations, making sure things were happening and moving quickly. This is one question I won't have to answer anymore from now until November 4th. So I am so happy that we are moving forward with this. Congratulations to the developers and congratulations to our city for what we are about to see. Thank you. Mayor Kuta?
Yeah, I'd like you to have the last word, so thank you for letting me get my... So, you know, way back when I was on city council last week, I was, this is really a unique situation where I was kind of in the room on one, you know, I don't say one side, but you know, from a different vantage point. And then, you know, becoming sworn in on mayor is Wednesday, Thursday having a meeting with the lawyers, and then Friday getting it resolved. Yeah, it was, it was fun. I mean, it was, you know, especially when it gets done. And again, I just want to reiterate what I said earlier. This was the way teamwork produces results. This is exactly the way it happens. We're going to bring more arts to our community with the post-grad students from Oberlin. We're going to have more arts with nonprofits that will be inside the dome. We're going to have the trails in public access. This is a win-win. I think the, I think the terms that we ultimately negotiated were a compromise. Don't want to say it was done beautifully or anything like that, but we got there. That's the most important thing. So just thank you to all, and I just want to make one thing clear. I'm only here till the end of the year, and I'm bringing that up in this context. This waiver of the fees, of the, of the building permit fees, I don't want anybody to get the idea that this is a precedent for future mayors. That's not something I wanted to do. Ultimately, the team that I was working with felt that this was the best path forward, but please understand that this is not to be perceived as a precedent setting for future Cleveland Heights governments. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but I'm saying, what I am saying is, as far as I'm concerned, this is a one-off, and the next administration can make their decision about how they want to proceed forward with economic deals. But I just, again, want to say appreciate, I think this is great for Cleveland Heights. It's a great project. Looking forward to shelves hitting the ground.
Thank you, Mayor Kuta. This project will be good for our citizens. Again, I'm grateful to Director Zamph and the Planning and Development Staff, to Director Hanna and his law department, and to the city's attorney, Jason Dodson, for negotiating the terms we have before us tonight. Thank you to my colleagues on council who asked their questions and did their due diligence to gather the information that we all needed to make our decision representing all the citizens of Cleveland Heights. I look forward to watching as this property is updated and transformed under the guidance of the Friends of Mendelson and the Developer Sustainable Community Associates Limited. We are moving forward together. So that being said, we have a piece of legislation that we are being asked to vote on, and I would like to call a roll call vote. Addie, please.
Russell?
Definitely aye.
Maddox?
Heck, yes.
Posh?
Yes.
Larson?
Absolutely.
Cobb?
Aye.
Petrus?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. All right. And we have a second piece to this, but we've done our discussion now, so we will vote on this after we've had it read.
I have Ordinance Number 207-2025 on first reading and ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Park Synagogue Borrower LLC for a commercial development loan in a sum of $750,000 to fund improvements to the real property located at 3300 Mayfield Road, permanent parcel numbers 684-34015, 684-34014, 684-35025, and more commonly known as the Park Synagogue Campus, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Kuta.
So moved.
Can you second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I should ask if there anybody wants to say anything. All right. I'd like to also call a roll call on this one. Addie, please.
Posh?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Petrus?
Yes.
Larson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, before we move on, Addie, I have a statement that I've been asked to read. This is from the developer, SCA. "We are so pleased that the City of Cleveland Heights is formally joining the Coalition of Partners who are investing in the future of Park Synagogue and the 28 surrounding acres. We would like to give special recognition to the Boulevard Neighborhood Group, which has been so welcoming of us and ardent in their advocacy for the project. Our hope is that this project can be an example of what is possible when the public, private, and philanthropic sectors all work together for the common good. One of our favorite professors and members at Oberlin has a saying, quote, 'Hope is a verb with its sleeves rolled up,' unquote. Our sleeves alongside the Cleveland Heights community are rolled up, and we look forward to making this vision a reality.'" All right, Addie, on to second readings.
I have Ordinance Number 175-2025 on second reading and ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate purchase agreement for the sale of 45 vacant residential lots located within the city to Future Heights, Inc., and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, please. Vice President Russell, would you speak out about what the results were of discussing this two piece of legislation in your committee?
Sure. This, both pieces of legislation was discussed in our planning and development committee, actually twice. We had two meetings, and we had a deep discussion with both developers pertaining to both of these lots and projects. We deeply dived into all of the details of what they would be doing to our city and the areas what they would be doing to our city as well. And our committee chose to vote it out of committee and unanimous, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other discussion?
Vice President?
Counselor Maddox?
I, I'll speak for both. I was going to wait until we did 176, too. I'm excited to move these forward. I'm looking forward to this in terms of the future of our community. I know there's been some questions about what does this look like. I can assure you, and I'll say this as a former board member of Future Heights, I believe these residential lots are in good hands. There are residents, our neighbors, and people who are passionate about making, making moves and making, moving our city forward. Resolution 176, I want to speak to and just park for a second because I had an opportunity to go with the administration and the city staff and see some of the homes that the developer has already created. And I can tell you, standing on that street and imagining what that looks like in Cleveland Heights is just unreal, and street, and I'm sorry, but to minimize that because it's blocks. So if you were to go up Lee Road and hook a right, I'm trying to think of what's a good street. Invermere maybe around there, or maybe that's too far up? Sutter Berry? Yep, Sutter Berry there, and you take a look, you can kind of see the future of Cleveland Heights. Being able to walk through those home designs, see the impact on those communities and talk to the residents there, I'm blown away. I have friends that live right over there on the border, and as soon as you hit those stop signs, it is transformative over there. And so to be able to see that and see that work and see that finished work, if you want to know what these will look like, if you want to know the type of work that that particular developer does, I want to encourage you to go over on the Shaker side, and you can see what's coming. But great things are absolutely coming to Cleveland Heights, just looking at that. I had the privilege of going through, and I encourage anyone to do the same. That entire area is completely different, and you can see the momentum is already moving into the city of Cleveland from this. And so this is a huge opportunity, and I can tell you, the city of East Cleveland is watching how we're handling this as well as they're trying to navigate this. And so this is a great opportunity for us to continue to take a lead. So I'll be voting yes on this, and I'm just excited for both. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Cobb?
Yes. I know there have been some concerns expressed about the process leading up to these developers being selected. In the almost, gosh, in the last four years that I've been on council, on city-owned lots, we've had one house built. That's been it. And I think we've had a basement dug for another. If we were to reject this legislation, I'm not sure when we'll ever have revised legislation coming forward and are going back out and seeking expressions of interest, which is what led to these developers being selected. I just hope that going forward, that we do have a formal process that's established that is a little more, not a little more, that is more transparent about how properties are selected, that the city is selling, and how the developers are vetted and selected that we ultimately choose to contract with.
Go ahead, Counselor Petrus. Oh, no? Okay. I support what Counselor Cobb just said. I think we can always be working on processes as we go through something new. But I've been in these neighborhoods where the vacant lots are depressing, and I'm looking forward to seeing things change around for those specific neighborhoods. So I'd like to call a roll, there's nobody else to comment? We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Cobb?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Maddox?
Yes.
Petrus?
Aye.
Posh?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Ordinance Number 176-2025 on second reading and ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate purchase agreement for the sale of 19 vacant residential lots located within the city to YRM Corp., and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor, former Mayor Seren.
So moved.
I get a second. Thank you. Discussion?
Madam President, I didn't know if this was a good time. I know we've had a discussion. I didn't know if either of the developers that are here tonight wanted to say anything to the community about these lots or anything publicly. I didn't know if that was a good opportunity for them to speak if they wanted to.
I can give each one two minutes, please. Go ahead.
Just if they wanted to. If not, it's fine.
If you want to.
Okay.
Thank you for appreciating that. We're okay? All right. All right. So any discussion, further discussion on this one? I'd also like to note...
Going to say another great opportunity for our city.
Absolutely. Roll call vote, Addie, please.
Russell?
Aye.
Maddox?
Aye.
Petrus?
Aye.
Posh?
Yes.
Larson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Motion, or are those opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 184-2025 on second reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Cuyahoga County for funding through the Home Program of the city's Affordable Housing Program through December 31st, 2025, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this one? Well, I think this is a program that we have benefited from in the past, and we will hopefully continue to benefit from it in the future if the federal government will continue to fund it. So I'm all in favor of this particular legislation. That being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And now we have committee reports. Does anybody have any committee report? Counselor Posh?
Turning at my calendar up, so I got the right dates, but we have a Health and Safety Committee meeting tomorrow evening in the executive conference room at 5 o'clock. Let me make sure I got the right time for everybody. Yes, between 5:00 and 6:00. I was told that the meeting is not going to be streamed live this evening. For that evening, it's not going to be streamed live. It will be available after the fact, but it's going to be recorded both on video and on sound. We also have a Finance Committee meeting at 5:00 on the 14th, and I'll be working with Chairman Larson on an agenda and getting that to Addy this week. But that's at 5:00 on the 14th, Tuesday. Acting Chairman. Gail Rehm is Chair.
You're next. Vice President Russell.
Yes, I would just like to say there will be no Planning and Development Committee meeting in the month of October. We are meeting with the Law Director over some issues and some things that we need to work through. And once we work through those issues and see our way through, we will be having a meeting in November.
Thank you very much. All right, I'd like to make report. First of all, for those of you who weren't in the committee the whole, the committee assignments changed a little bit. I'm honoring Councilor Maddox's request to be on the Planning and Development Committee, so he is now a member of that committee. The other people on there remain the same. I asked Councilor Posh if he would help out. He actually volunteered to step up to help me on finance because we have budget season coming up, and I will remain on that committee, and the three of us on that committee together, Councilor Maddox as well, we working to get the information that we need, and we're looking forward to Mayor Kuta's getting all the staff information together so we have a budget to vote on. And also wanted to say that Addy will be reaching out to directors very soon about scheduling the 2026 budget hearings. Okay? For municipal services and environmental sustainability, the committee's next meeting is Monday, October 13th at 6:30. John Barber will be our guest. We will be discussing data collection, points of data that will help keep the administration, council, and our citizens informed of progress made for issues like the composting volumes, Leopardo energy and efficiency savings, and air quality control. I'd also like to say that this is National Lead Safe Week. This week is a call to bring together individuals, organizations, industry, and tribal, state, and local governments to reduce childhood exposure to lead. The Raising Awareness Campaign focuses on three actions. Get the facts, get your child tested, and get your home tested. The staff in Cleveland Heights Housing Department is very ready to help anybody that wants more information, or reach out to me, and I can get you in contact with the Lead Safe Commissioner. That's all that I have for my committee reports. So we're going to move on to old business. New business? Go ahead.
New business, a question for the mayor. Do we now have permission to speak with directors so that I can meet with the Director of Planning and Development?
You know, that's so funny because I wrote in some notes like two, three weeks ago, you know, make sure you, of course, I forgot to go reread it, but you guys have complete permission to interact with directors. We're actually going to bring that up on Wednesday at the staff, the senior staff meeting, but thank you for asking.
Just wanted to make...
Permission granted.
Just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Any more new business? All right, moving on to... Councilmember comments, which we are restricting to three-minute time limit. So who wants to go ahead? If anybody does? Councilor Posh?
I haven't written anything, but I, just a real big thank you for the people went through, the people in our community that went through this whole recall cycle, whether you voted for or against it. I mean, we are in a state of dysfunction still, but I see a breath of fresh air, and I think we can help build trust with each other amongst all the parties. I was, I think we all have high expectations, but oh my Lord, last week, they were just blown away. Thank you, Tony, for doing everything that you've done. So thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to say that two meetings ago, President Kuta had me to, asked me if I wanted to answer a question from a resident who posed a question to me and Petrus, and not realizing it may have came off as a political speech. So I want to make sure that everybody understands that from now on, hopefully, there will be no questions asked from us regarding anything political, and there will be no comments made. And I'm quite sure Councilman, no, President Larson, will not say, "Do you want to answer that question?" So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Russell. That was really important to hear. Councilor Maddox.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to let the public know, the rumors are true. If you looked out on our council president's porch, you did see Anthony Maddox walking out of her house on Saturday morning after an amazing meeting and conversation. I'm just joking. Some of the neighbors were really happy to see us having a conversation this weekend. We really connected. I want to say this, it was an honor to be invited to your home. My wife and I take that extremely seriously, who we allow in our home and our space. And so I wanted the public to know, and I asked her if I could share this today, that it's important that you know that we've met. We've had a conversation, not just about where we are as a council now, but where we're trying to go in terms of our transition, some of the ideas in terms of engagement. It was just a great, great, transparent conversation, and I wanted this public to know that I really look forward to working with you, and I appreciate that one of the very first things that you did was reach out to me and ask for that meeting and connect with me. I was able to hear some of the ideas and plans that I had, and I was able to hear your heart and share as well. And so I thought it was important that the public knew that not only we're starting out as a council, but that I have met with our current President of Council. We've got some great plans together, and I'm looking forward to working with you. But again, I just wanted to thank you for opening up your home for that conversation on Saturday morning, and I appreciated that.
Thank you. I think it was ironic that Sally walked by at the same time. She's walking her dog, and she said, "I love seeing my council members talking to each other." I hope that we can continue that with all of us, and I, that's what's exciting to me right now, is that I feel like we're all moving forward together. We will disagree in the future, but we'll do it in a collegial and professional manner. So, and I was glad to have you in my home. So thank you for coming over. President's report. To the staff of this city, thank you for the work that you do every day to provide services to all of us. Though this transition has been challenging and will continue to be, if we're all working together, treating each other and our citizens with respect, Cleveland Heights will be an even better place to live and work. To our citizens, thank you for celebrating us and celebrating with us as we welcomed interim Mayor Kuta. Please continue to join us at our meetings or watch them on YouTube if more convenient for you. Reach out to me anytime. My phone number is on the website as well as my email when you want to share information, ask me questions, or have concerns. A council charter amendment that forum will be held this Tuesday, tomorrow night at 6:30 at the Noble Library. Charter Commission Review Chair Linda Strievsky and Law Director Hanna will be joining us, and it is a committee of the whole meeting, so as many of councils that can be there as we hope can be there. There will be time for us to hear your questions and concerns about the charter amendment, and we will also be holding a forum on the charter amendment on October 27th at 6:00 PM at the Lee Road Library. Both meetings will be recorded, which is why your meeting will be, will not be live-recorded, but it will be recorded and available the next day because Steve Barker will be over at the library with us tomorrow night and on the 27th. That being said, looking left and right, this meeting is adjourned at 8:50.